If you'll bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all here together. Please be with us as we go through the business of the school. Lord, I know there's a lot of unspoken prayers out there, Lord, for healing for families and friends of families, Lord. Please be with those people, Lord, as they go through the anguish and the agony that they're in. Lord, help them heal and be better. In your name we pray, amen. We'll start in a couple of minutes, but I'd like to get the prayer out of before we start. I know, I'm gonna start in two minutes or I have to get the prayer. They will start to call the word. A little different. I am different. Get a big prayer. They'll all clear out in about five minutes. It's like church that are on the back.
That is a long minute.
That's a long minute, isn't it? Shouldn't worry.
When you watch it. My husband has seven days more.
I turned 22 tickets down. Okay, it's seven o'clock. Roll call, we call an order. Mr. Charles Walker is absent today. Everyone else is present and accounted for. Public participation? Nobody? Okay. Honors and recognitions.
Honors and recogni-- you know, we were talking before everybody got in here. This has been a really good year for our kids and we're really proud of them. We've got to bring somebody in every month since I've been here. That has been incredible. And we're going to start off with photography. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Evening all. You have in front of you some samples of the student work that was recognized at the Home Camera Club Youth Photo Competition, which is considered, we consider, the highest level in the state. And from there, 11 of those kids were chosen to go to national competition, actually international competition, which we'll find out more about at the end of the summer. But we have, as you all know, this is a really busy time of the year. Kids are working, kids are at the soccer games, so forth. So I was unfortunate to have, what, two? Three, okay. That's really ill. Did you bring anything good with you?
No.
Did not, okay. Finley Harrison, who you see there, not only was first place, but as best to show for a freshman, which is highly unusual. We also had with us Miles Harrison, who is the retired chief photographer. And you had also mentioned that Miles his first senior state golf tournament. So we've got a lot of good stuff going on and we appreciate your support. You can't believe in our equipment that these kids have access to because of your support. And also the prestige that their actions bring to our history because even the secretary of education has a son that's involved. In fact, he is one of the winners there. And she's very supportive of this kind of education that goes beyond the regular plan like work. So thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Grad and Ms. Wood, would you please present, talk about your state FFA degree recipients?
We have one with us tonight. We have six students seniors receiving their state degree at FFA convention in Tulsa this Wednesday. Like Dr. Johnson said, kids are busy with work and Lions Club stole several of our kids tonight. But Haley Bearden is here. She is one of the six receiving their state degree. The others are Keenan and Kealan Combs, Emily Altizer, Robert Barnett, and Colton Burns. And then we also just finished up our state contest last week. We had three speech kiddos finish in the top five. Carson Swafford was a second place at state. Ryland Burns was a third place and Caroline Swafford was a fourth place. And then our animal science quiz bowl team finished.
Third, yep. And then Agmech was in the top five, they were fifth, and then our meat, Eva Alteam was fifth as well. So I had three different teams in the top five at state also, so.
Awesome. So we'll have several students cross the stage at state convention this week, so.
Ms. Magnus? Before she talks, I went over, got to hang out with Coral kids when we were over at the Vocal Kids, when we were over at the state contest. And they really, they really are pretty special. They do a really good job. It was a lot of fun to listen to them.
Thank you. I have three in my seat up here. Haven Branson and Shiloh Willingham, Ethan McLean. Shiloh and Haven were in the JV ensemble and they earned a superior. Again, you have to get a superior at district to advance to state. The state's the highest thing we do. So yeah, so they earned superior in the ensemble. And then we had Ethan McLean and he was in, were you in both JV ensembles or just?
No, yeah, I was in both of our V ensemble.
Yeah, because we do, okay, so we do an a cappella and then one where we have a piano. And he was in both of those. And they received superior at state as well, which is the highest skill that we can do. Then we took four solos. And Shiloh is a freshman and she sang a French song called Chant mon Père. And it's very difficult. And her mom told me, wait, she sang that song? Because her mom is very musical and say that used at OCU. So anyway, I was like, yeah, I thought, well, it'll be good for her. And then the girl got a one at district and then a one at superior, a superior, I mean, at state. So she did that on a song that normally, the last person who did that was a Ju-- was Sable. So anyway, she was a junior senior is the last person who did that song. So I was very proud of that. Ethan McLean, he did, what is the name of yours?
Oh, Now Sleeps the Crimson.
Now Sleeps the Crimson Petal, which is another difficult piece by Roger Quintero. And then TJ Washington sang a song in Spanish. He does not speak Spanish. And but he earned a superior as well. And Bianca Garcia, who's a senior, she sang in Italian. She sang O mio Vamito and she also earned a superior. And the judge was very complimentary of her saying, so anyway, we are done. And I'm ready to sleep now. And I think they are too, and I appreciate them coming out because of, do y'all want to say anything? So anyway, but thank you so much for your support. Thank you for coming out to our concert. And thank you again for coming out to hear them at competition.
One more, Mr. Brayden Osterhold. He was recently recognized. We did a signing at lunchtime, but through the Quest Bridge program, it's our second year in a row. We currently have a student who's on full ride at Notre Dame, freshman Jordan Beck. And so then this year, we have to recognize Brayden. He's received a full scholarship through the Quest Bridge program to Yale, which is big time. And he's the first student who had other Ivy leaders, but he's the first student at Kingfisher History to go to Yale. And so a big honor there. And just, I had all these numbers, like they get 50,000 applicants a year and acceptance rate's 3%. And then he was one of like 28 through the Quest Bridge program out of 13,000. So pretty big time honor there for Brayden.
I went to the vocal concert and also they came and talked about saying for Lions Club. And I was just so impressed. It's incredible, amazing, incredible.
Mr. Kyle was going to present some of his robotics.
Yes, I'd like to present and introduce two freshmen robotic students. They competed at the TSA's competition against really big schools. They had two weeks to make the robot because we had just finished our first robotics team. Didn't make it to nationals, but these guys are going to nationals with their robot. Bring your robot out here. I want to bring it out here. Normally TSA is very strict about what to do, what kind of robot, the dimensions and what you can do with the robot. This year, they went, they went hot rod. They said, whatever you want to do with your robot, these are the things it needs to do. And so I just, I have this closet full of robot parts. Build a hot rod, guys. So this is, this is, go ahead, spin it around. This is the hot rod they built. It may look like this is kind of a robot, but there were 10 tasks that this thing has to do, including things like picking up a wooden egg, putting it into an egg carton. Of course, you know, with eight prices of eggs, they didn't wash and drill eggs. But there were cones they had to stack, there were rings they had to do. They had 10 minutes to do it and there were 10 tasks. And there are, it's a 10 by 10 foot pit and there are obstacles in the way. The boys figured out that some of these obstacles are not very sturdy. So perhaps instead of moving the obstacles, we could just destroy them. So that's exactly what this robot is built to do. It's meant to pick up the objects, things that are very small and delicate, and place them. But it's also meant to destroy things, get them out of the way so it could pick up the objects. You'll see that they put this all thread on each side. This is a heavy robot. This thing weighs almost 20 pounds. So it basically tore up everything in its way. And after they finished it, they were one of the only two teams in state to actually do all 10 objects. Every team after that started putting weight on their robot to make it do the same thing that theirs did. I was so proud of them for figuring this out and doing it. So they earned a trip to Gaylord Auckland in Nashville at the end of June. I believe that trip is on your agenda for later, later.
You want us to preach?
I know. He doesn't like country music. But both families have two minutes to go. I'm, if I'm approved, I'd like to take the suburban, I have to take the robot and all the extra parts. Because basically I'm like, okay, if this robot fails, you have to have another one that you can just pull out and go compete with it. I would love to, just the fact that they're competing for a national title, I think is great. I've been doing tech ed nine years now and I've never had a team go all the way to nationals, so. And the freshmen, so. I have three more years with them. I feel like I have two shade guilds. But thank you for your support. Thank you. They're boys, they don't need things.
Mr. Evans, can I also add?
Yes, ma'am.
We had our state scholastic on Friday. I just didn't have the kids come tonight. But Will and Finley both placed third at state in their event test that they took. Mr. Kaya had five students place in the top 10 at the state scholastic meet.
Awesome.
Yep, so.
Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate you coming and keep working hard. Oh, golf. Yes, golf made it to state?
Yeah.
Golf made it to state and y'all are, what day are y'all next week?
My day is Tuesday.
Most of them approved since we played together three, three years ago.
Just kind of like a carry by my team, but.
Good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else, because last, last month I mistakenly thought we were done and we weren't. So does anybody else have any honors or recognitions that they want to talk about? The floor is open. If not, feel free to leave unless you want to stay. It's always exciting. Thank you all so much. Okay, discussion of possible actions on the minutes of the April 7th, 2025 regular board meeting.
We moved this up into a separate category because that consent agenda was bizarre last month. We thought we'd make it easier on you guys to get through it.
Anybody have any corrections to the last, to the board minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to agree for the last board meeting.
Second. All those in favor, say a high or raise your right hand. Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on the following. The general funding encumbrances. Number two, the child nutrition funding encumbrances. Number three, change orders listed in general building. Co-op and child nutrition funds. Number four, the treasurer's report. Number five, the activity fund custodian report. Number four, transfer of funds. Give more PTO to Heritage PTO, $4,484.90. And give more PTO to KUE PTO, $3,802.31. Boost with on proceeds. And declare a surplus of being model monitor. You can read the numbers.
Okay, on the general funding encumbrances, we're really slowing down because we're closing books at this point and trying to get to where we can get to a normal stopping point by the last board meeting in June. And that's reflected in our approval of encumbrances. We have 125,000 out of the general, 10,000 out of co-op, 52,000 out of building, and child nutrition is 3,160. There's really nothing exceptional within the encumbrances this time. The 1729 for WBC Rental Center LLC was rental for a man lift to put up softball nets because we had to have an all-terrain man lift. It was funny watching Bobby drive that up here. That was quite interesting. 1736 is Royal Signs. This is repair the lettering on the football scoreboard. This would recover the front of it with the local, it's getting a little age on it. And it's a lot cheaper than spending $80,000 to replace the whole thing whenever it's still functioning. We got a, we got a bid from Royal Sign and a guy out of Wichita. These were Royal Sign did them. We're going to have to look at the softball, softball scoreboard as well. Mr. Blundell told me this morning that he was seeing some peeling on that. Then we do, Jackson's at Kingfisher LLC diagnostic of S17 for repairs on transmission. We had to pay for them to look at it to tell us that there was something wrong with the transmission. RJ Raymer has that now and he's working on the transmission. We also lost the head gasket on the Snuggles bus. And we, we were afraid we were going to have to replace the motor. That's $40,000 motor in that thing. But we checked the, checked the, checked the pistons and the cylinders to make sure there wasn't any water leaking down through there. So we're good on that. He's working on the head gasket on that now, so we'll have it later in the summer. And then we've been paying the lodging expense out of general fund for students whenever they're going to the state contest because, well, they've worked hard to get there. Whenever we come over to the change orders, these are, these are mostly negatives except for a couple with Davidson Fuels, it's an annual fuel cost for the fleet and so forth. We do have, we did have auditing services of Britton, Caicadall, and Miller for preparing the temporary estimate of needs with temporary appropriations. Then moving to page six, we have some payroll encumbrances there that are some change orders that we had to increase. The 816 and a quarter on 70032s for Heath Price for working on the ransomware deal that we'll discuss here in a little bit. Moving on to the activity fund, oh, back on page nine. This was the first part of the, 2101 was the first part of the payment on the turf. We'll have the rest of it. We also have another amount in here for Bragg Heat and Air and S&amp;J. We had to do some work on some, these are still the payments, some part of the payments on replacing the heat and air system over Heritage. As we get back to the, as we move on back to the activity funds. Well, before we get to the activity funds, we'll look at the, when you look at the revenue totals for this month, if you'll go to your spreadsheet, the packet that I've got you. We're really starting to get locked in on what we're going to probably wind up. If you'll notice on number one, the revenue, new revenue is $2,766,000 less in '25 than '24. It's been $2,900,000 all year. Gross production, we're down $794,000 in it. But if you go and look at what our actual collections are, we're $635,000 over our estimated collections. That's, that's good. That's real good. Foundation aid is 172,600, $172,917, more than FY '24. And within 700, we're almost within a million dollars of being collected out, which we're going to get really close to that. I do want to point out one thing to you though. On the state paid salary, 3212, we won't get that next year. So we're having to pull that out of the budget for the revenue. That was a one-year deal. Everybody else in the state gets it, but we don't. The primary driver is still the gross production. And I am going to tell you, we've got to be very cautious because gross production is a scary, scary world right now. And it, when I looked at it at noon, it was below, oil was below $59. That's not good. When you look at the next page, once again, we come back to that the balance forward is still the biggest driver in our revenue that's going to cause, cause a drop. But as we look at this, I want you, I want to point out to you the difference in what the new revenue is, which was last year was 14, the total new revenue was $14,151 at this time. Right now, our total new revenue is $11,385. And we're catching up rather rapidly, but we're, we're still going to be behind because of the gross production. The gross production is not having a big enough effect to overcome what we're losing in added raw revenue. And state aid is not enough to overcome that. I mean, we're better in state aid than we thought we were. So I'm telling you that just so you understand, we're not going to wind up where we did last year. We knew that when we started this little journey together. But I want to make sure that we're very clear that we're work, that that's why we're adjusting, we adjusted things like we had. Whenever you flip to the next page, if you look at our expenditure differences between this year and last year, we're looking at, we're looking at a $4,096,000 draw in expenditure. By the time we get to the end of the year, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $6.5 million to $7.5 million if we've done our math right. And you know, you've got to be careful sometimes because there's a lot of math there. We're having, we're seeing a decrease month over month and it's accelerating in our staffing and in our burdens, which that has been the biggest place. If you'll look right here, the other thing you want to look at is right here in 2025, look at the relative smallness of the services compared to 2024. That's a lot because of legal services from 2024. But if you'll look, we're in a much more healthy percentage wise. This is the normal pie graph that we'll see in a regular healthy budget in a district of our size. You're looking at, you're looking at basically 74.5% of burdens and salaries to the rest of the state. Now, if that is way elevated, there is a bigger problem. But this, this takes that back into alignment with where we ought to be. Our supplies, once again, I continue to be amazed at how our teachers have really conserved supplies so well this year. And they really, and we really, other than having to buy the air conditioning units, if we hadn't had to go in and do the Heritage air conditioning and heating units, we'd be $600,000 ahead in revenue. Because that, between that, the Q and electrical, it's, it's just mounted up. But fortunately, we were able to take care of those things because nobody wants to be in that room whenever you've got heat. Whenever we look at our month to month, this is, this is really kind of, I know it sounds really nerdy when you say this, but you see this number down here on the bottom right-hand corner of the table, $15,258,000? We are coming, our, our algorithms are lining up with each other. And whenever you're seeing your algorithms line up, that's, that is a really, really strong thing. And if you look at our, if you look at our total spending, our spending for this year is the purple line. And if you'll notice, we're, we're below 2023, we're below 2024. And we are, there's, I don't think there's any way we'll catch 2022 because that was, between 2022 and 2023 was when we had to pay raise. And you throw $5,000 on top of everybody's salary, it tends to cause you to go up. But what, what we are doing though is we're quickly getting to that point where we're pulling back to where we're at least within eyesight of the total expenditure. Number five, this is going to give us a carryover somewhere between $1,500,000 to $2,220,000 or $2,200,000. It just depends on our collections. And our collections could be difficult because of the SCE. You're always counting on them to be able to get collections out of time and manner. Could this be higher? Yeah, if, if we had a sudden surge of gross production and the state treasurer says that gross production was up statewide this month. They haven't posted the schools yet, so maybe. School land is really shot up and motor vehicle, we will probably got another 200 to 300, 200,000 to 220,000 off that pretty quickly. That's just our normal trend. But if there's a hiccup at the SCE, we could be down to 500,000. I'm just going to warn you now. I don't want anybody surprised. And the reason that that would be is because that money's been put in for, but it hasn't come back to us. And we've got, we're, the ladies are working really hard to get that done. So we'll, we'll get there. When you flip to the next page, this is, this is the sheet Dawn likes. And we try to check each other's numbers. And she is at $15,111,000 instead of $15,822,000. So you know, $100,000 variance, that's, that's fairly close. It's close enough. And what we're seeing here is that we've got $1,257,000 left to spend and we've got somewhere around $1,500,000 left to collect, somewhere there, we think. We, one thing that I will tell the board that whenever we started this, we were really going to try to get to $14,562, which is what the ex-size board gave us to extend, $14,200,000 somewhere near. That was our goal. And if we hadn't had to do the air conditioning and the heating and if we hadn't had to go ahead and buy the Gilmore stuff, we would have been below. We would have, we would have been below by about 200,000. But if the bus were candy and that's with all that in Christmas. So you know, that's just the way it works out. But we have made major strides in balancing this thing. But we have made major strides in, in balancing this thing. We are still, we are on preparations for twenty-twenty-six. We are, we are projecting we'll increase salary and burdens by one million, two hundred, uh, one hun- one hundred and twenty thousand, I'm sorry. That's, that's ton, ton of time to say, it's not good. Uh, there will be an increase in supplies on salary position and services due to the Rice to Reed grant that you're gonna hear about tonight. The revenue and services that accompanies this will more than make up for the spending increases. Uh, we will be doing a Form C seven, I told you we do it this month, we're gonna wait and do it in June, we may do it in the very last meeting in June to increase our appropriations, uh, for grant money and federal funds. And the revenue budgets for next year will need to be, need to consider potential loss of gross production, revenues due to price reductions in oil and natural gas. And possibly, possibly taking a look at where our app will go on that side. And we'll get back to this, I've got the rest of, the rest of the presentation. One thing that we did see, gross production is up fifty thousand over this time last year. And then if you'll look over on page, uh, there are just a box on that. Okay, if you look over on page twenty-four, uh, we have seven hundred and four thousand dollars in, on our, uh, in our activity funds. Our activity funds are doing pretty well. The, the, uh, we're getting healthier. And, uh, we, one thing that we're gonna have to work on, we're trying to stay out of an A D account as much as we can, because that's where we take a lot of non-revenue sports, referees out of, and we're down to nine thousand, two hundred and nine dollars in yet. But we're almost at the end of this year, and then we'll start getting revenue back in. The concessions account is at eleven thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. That's a lot of ice cream, guys. A lot of ice cream. Coach Blundell did well. And that's treasurer's report. And on the surplus bean model, Ms. Knop did, uh, put that in, put that in your, uh, it's after page thirty-one. That's, that's a, that's a monitor that no longer functions with what she's using. Okay.
Anybody got any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. All, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes, E to one through seven pass. All right. F, discussion, possible action to approve the following contracts.
Okay, we've got our regular silages, which is our student software. Then we have, uh, interquest detection canines for the dogs that we run in the school, fire troll for our, uh, fire systems that we have to have because, and, uh, we're gonna have to come up with one for index, because index also is involved in our fire system. Then we have O S S B A employment services. And that's the contracts.
Yeah. Are these, any of these new?
No. These are, these are all old contracts.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes. G, discussion, possible action to approve the annual amendments to renew the food services management company contracts from two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six.
Oh, this is for Tare. They did, they did recently hire us a new manager here, uh, that would be Cheyenne, works down at Pizza Hut, that manages there. She'll be coming up here to work with us, really nice young lady. Uh, so this is same contract as last year.
Is this, how'd this company work out as opposed to on previous?
Guys, how did the, how did the, how did the, how did the lunchrooms work out this year?
Better?
Yeah. Food was a lot better. Lot, we saw a lot more kids eating lunches here at school. And enjoying them. Last year, we didn't get a whole lot of, this is good. And we got, we got more of that this year.
Not so great at Heritage.
Is it not as, not as good as Heritage?
No, but, yeah.
And not Gilmore either?
Uh, it is a little bit better than, we don't, we don't have, you can't cook at Heritage, and so what's happening is they're bringing it from the Q, and I'm not sure why this is happening, but we're, we never have enough food. Um, a lot of times our food is cold. We've tried to address it multiple times, but it happens all of the time.
It's been, Haley, it's been good.
What about Q?
It's just okay. The servings are very small, like today was macaroni and cheese. Yeah.
Macaroni and cheese, that was it?
That was it. There, you got a roll. There was no meat or anything, it was just a bowl of macaroni and cheese. So it's been odd things, and the kids are always hungry, asking for seconds, uh, say, can we do something? It's not been very focused.
I guess when you talk to Ms. Cheyenne, our new manager coming in about it.
Yeah. None of the things that were promised, like the chef, he's never once been in our building to do anything like he said he was going to, or fund new things for the kids to try out. We have not done that.
Hope that promise to solve those things too. They never came through.
They did, he came here.
Right, that did not happen. They were going to for us, but then they had to, it didn't work out.
Some of their things.
That's when he was, well, harshly.
Any other discussion? Sounds like it's something we need to get on top of with, and we do need to have food next year, so.
Yes.
I, I will recommend that we go ahead and approve it, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve. Okay, the, uh.
Hang on, we have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't frozen yet. I guess I'll second.
All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes. That's okay, we have food for next year.
It'll get better.
Yeah, it will. Okay, H, discussion, possible action to approve the temporary appro- appropriations for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, as prepared by Burton, Burton, Kirk, and all Miller CPAs.
Okay, if, uh, if you'll look on your, uh, temporary appropriations, uh, general fund would place at fourteen million, five hundred eighty thousand, building fund would place at one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, child nutrition, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, cooperative fund, two hundred and sixty-four thousand. And this would be relative to the, um, to the amount that we have right now. It's very similar. And we're going, as we do our estimate for next fall, by law, we have to put the thirty-six million. If the excise board decides not to grant those, that's fine, but we have to put those thirty-six million, or else we don't get them. So this, this is figured with the thirty-six million.
Any questions or discussions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I hear a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes. Uh, agenda item I, discussion, possible action to approve board policy E M D B dash one flags.
Yes, when, uh, when we were dealing with this last month, we had to come in and do the, um, flag policy, and Dr. Johnson came up, came to me afterwards and said, no, we're kind of limited in what we can do. So what we did is we took the policy, and he and I worked on it, and this is what we came up with, so that we're able to fly different, various flags, like POW flags. The original law was built to make sure that you could fly the American flag on school property after the Edmond incident last year, and I think they got a little bit overboard at O S S B A, so we fixed it.
Okay, any discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Second, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes. J, discussion, possible action to approve the Kingfisher School transfer capacity by site.
Uh, we approved this last month, but in order to be ready for what we were, uh, what we were, what we had done with our staffing, we reduced the numbers in the junior high and high school in particular, because that's where we took the biggest hits on our students. And, uh, this was, this is done so that we can serve the students in Kingfisher and make sure that we have enough room for kids that can be, uh, we moved from a hundred and twenty down to ninety-five on these numbers. We can increase them if we feel like we need to, but it's, it's really to try to make sure that we don't have to go hire an extra teacher or two, or try to find teachers to put in those classrooms because of the sudden embursed of students whenever we're trying to segment.
So just, so I'm looking, so what, basically what you're saying, like in the third grade, unless you move in the district, we would not approve a transfer in, correct?
No, we, we have a little bit of fudger there, but not much.
We can, but.
We can, but not.
We can, but, but, okay. But if you move to the district, gotta thank you, but just wanna transfer in, and that's what those, the open spots. Okay, I just wanted to be clear for myself. Any other discussion or questions? So basically, what you got here is ninety-five minus whatever numbers on here.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yes, sir.
From K to twelve.
That's right.
Any other questions? All yours, any motion?
I think the motion will approve the transfer.
Pass. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes. K, discussion, possible action to approve a sick leave sharing request for Yolanda Padilla.
Ms. Padilla's, uh, husband had a really bad car wreck, and she is having to take care of him, and she's asked to activate the, uh, sick leave sharing, and I would recommend that we do so.
Do you hear a motion? There's a, we have a, we changed our policy on that, right? This year, like they have to exhaust it or something, or it's all up to the models.
She meets the policy.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes. L, discussion, possible action to approve a lead fiscal agent.
This is something we have to do with the State Department so that we can actually receive money and do federal programs.
Yeah, that's my name.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Bill, you gonna put your name on there, Stan? No, okay. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes. M, discussion, possible action to approve out-of-state travel for the robotics team to attend the national convention, national compet- competition in Nashville, Tennessee on June twenty-seventh through July first.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. I'll second.
All those in favor raise your right hand. They're going to Nashville. Pass. Discussion, possible action to approve an agreement with Ashley Waddell for speech, language, pathology services.
And that is, uh, this is a regular service that we do. Uh, we have to have this for special education.
Same person, same.
Yes.
Yeah. Any like motion? Motion?
I consider that a good question.
Z, second it. All right. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion passes.
I don't like this thing, I don't.
Oh, you know what? Okay. Oh, superintendent's report.
If the, if Stotz.
And so I'm just going to give a quick rundown of events coming up. Um, it's fast and furious these last, um, couple weeks. So today, we kicked that off with, um, our first graders got to, um, go to Heritage Elementary for a tour of their school, so they met Ms. Meyer and Ms. Schaper, and they even, um, got to play on the playground, which was a highlight of their day. So they're super excited to go to second grade. Um, tomorrow will be, we will be attending the fourth grade musical, and then we have picnics coming up. Our pre-K is this Friday, May ninth. Um, Monday is first grade, and then the last day of school is kindergarten. And we do have the seniors coming to visit, um, next week on Monday, um, so that is really a special time for the seniors as they get to come back to elementary school, and then our littles really love to get to see them walk through as well. And then we have classroom awards, May fourteenth, for kindergarten and first grade, and then we have some luau activities for pre-K and TK the last two days of school, and then they invite parents in that last day as well to do a, kind of a farewell and, um, get a picture with their, um, luau, um, things for the last day of school. And then, um, after that, it'll be, uh, thinking about Rising Stars kicking back off May twenty-eighth, through June nineteenth, and that's it.
At Heritage, very similar for us, we have lots of things coming up. We're gonna see the fourth grade musical tomorrow after Gilmore. We have Super Kids Day on Thursday. Our third graders are gonna have a bake sale on Friday. On the twelfth, our third graders go to the Q, and they get to tour their classrooms that they'll have next year. Um, our, the twelfth, our second graders do get to go down to Gilmore for, um, the seniors, um, walking through, so they're excited about that. The thirteenth, the third graders have their awards. Fourteenth, second graders have their awards, and the third graders go to the park and pool. And then, of course, the fifteenth is the last day, there's probably something that they, I just want to write down. Um, we're just so busy. I do have, um, also this for special education, and I was just gonna give you guys, I made this brochure, we're required, um, by law to have, so if you go on our website, I have posted a, a child find, I guess it's just like a child find, um, page that talks about, um, if you have a child that has a disability, um, what you can do, um, to get services for Kingfisher. But the other part of that is we need to put these flyers around. Did you put, yeah, I'll give them a look. Um, this is, um, something that we're gonna place, like in doctors' offices, pharmacies, different things like that, and it just, um, explains, you know, the, the categories, um, sooner start, what part sooner start takes, um, you know, what part they, um, play in, um, um, with a, a child with a disability that's, uh, below the age of, um, from two to three, and then the different schools that we have, and I put the numbers, of course, and then I put my email address, 'cause I'm the, the director, and then, um, I explained shot, you can just see everything that's on there, but this is just all the information that we have to have and required by law, and so hopefully you're gonna see these things around town, because, um, we have those that, just anywhere in our district, you know, they, they don't realize that, you know, if their kid needs speech, you know, you know, we can serve them before they come to school. Parents don't understand that concept, and so this is something that, um, we need to make sure that they understand, so that they're getting the services that they need before they come to school, so that we can try to, you know, help them before they get there. So this is gonna be going now, so I'm gonna let you guys.
This is very nice.
Um, for the Q, uh, this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and so, um, I have lots of things planned for my teachers to celebrate all the amazing stuff that we have, um, at the Q, um, and so we've kind of built that in with all the other things that we have going on, A R trips, and, um, the musical for our fourth grades, we'll be going over there tomorrow, um, and celebrating these last few weeks of school. We're doing our awards ceremony on the last day of school, um, and with the early release, seems appropriate to do that at the same time. Um, but it's just been a busy couple weeks. We finished testing today, it was our last kid, last makeup test, and so we are officially done with state testing. Every one of our kids took the test, all of them, and so that was a big deal, so shout out to my counselor, Miss Costa, for making sure that all that was done and taken care of. Um, but kinda like I said, we have tons of things going on, lots of dates, but I do wanna, our staff at the Q are basing, and so this week is all about celebrating them.
You're working out too.
Saying sorry.
Yeah, you said it for, she just missed her.
I said it for, for, yeah.
I guess now I'm gonna have to shout out to Ms. Lazicki for doing state testing, but...
But we did also at the junior high have finished up state testing. It went really well. Uh, Ms. Lozicki actually did work very hard on that, staying here late at night, uh, to get that done and getting here early in the morning. She still didn't beat me here, but she got here pretty early. Um, Ms. Owens wanted me to, uh, tell you that the, this is for high school, uh, banned state jazz con- contest, they got second place in the four A combos, excuse me, state solo and ensembles, they got superior in brass trio, excellent in slow, solo, trombone, percussion, ensemble and flute duet. So that's a big shout out for her. Um, here at the junior high though, to continue, we, the thirteenth is our awards and eighth grade promotion. And that morning we will, uh, have McDonald's come out and serve breakfast for our eighth
Yeah, uh, at the high school, um, we also finished state testing. Um, for us, we, uh, take our juniors as an incentive to talk golf, so made a day of that, have a lot of fun, um, get to take them to talk golf. Um, Reagan Snyder is competing, she competed today, tomorrow at the state, state golf tournament as individual representing Kingfisher. Um, we have our girls soccer team playing playoffs as we speak and, um, I don't know if you guys heard, but the, when we score a goal, the commentator says goal very loud and, and for a long time. And so, uh, heard that earlier, um, while there was discussion, so hopefully that's going well out there. Boys state soccer next, or, uh, state golf next week. And then, um, we have lots of ag that we recognize at state convention and, and just prepping our seniors for graduation. State track meets that week, next week also?
Yes, yep.
And then Friday and Saturday?
Friday and Saturday this week.
And, or, or at Plamey?
The tracks at Plamey and the golf at Ardmore?
Right next to each other.
Is it, is golf, is it Duncan or?
No, it's Ardmore.
Yeah, so we'll be keeping it busy. As you'll notice, their, their slides are a little needed tomorrow.
Um, I want to first congratulate, uh, Mrs. Sheila, actually Redwine's up here, but Mrs. Sheila Redwine for getting this grant. Um, you realize it's a big deal when they say twenty districts rewarded it, but we went to the State Department and you really don't realize how big of a deal it is. Um, only twenty districts, but we had every person from the State Department speaking to us about this grant and every single person walked up there to congratulate and to tell us, um, how big of a deal it was. So, um, after seeing her paperwork, her thirty pages, um, it is beyond impressive that she is able to give these things for our district and to be able to serve birth all the way to grade twelve is huge. And, um, another congratulations to Mr. Evans for helping her with that, to give her all the numbers and all the details of it. Um, you can tell these people went through it page by page and they knew our grants very, very well. And so, um, big congratulations to the both of them for this grant. Um, it is a Rice to Read Grant and it's going to hit literacy, like it says, from, um, third through grade twelve. It has components for every grade level and it really targets our, I would say, pre-K kindergarten to about third grade. Um, the big deal when we had everyone come speak to us is that if students are not reading by the third grade, um, their academics are going to drop significantly. So this is to really hopefully help with that, um, not only to screen them, but also to then have an implementation plan for how we are going to help them. Thank you. Um, the grant initiative, we are giving in the area, which is going, we are screener, that is the one from the State Department, so we will utilize that one. Um, the OK MTSS on Ed Plan, right now, that really targets our special ed students, but pretty soon that's going to track all students in every district. Um, it's going to be extremely beneficial because when we get a student coming into the district, we know all the details about them and then we will continue to add to that and when they leave our district, if they go somewhere else, you continue to build on that. So it helps a great deal, not only with their education and their benchmark, but also if they have any special ed services, um, or if there's been any discipline, we know that right away we give this student. The Science of Reading, all the things that are implemented are with the science, are backed by the Science of Reading Program. So the K through fifth grade is a letter certification. Um, it'll be a two-year program that kindergarten through fifth grade will go through. Um, it's incredible. It helps a great deal with dyslexia and other issues that you have with reading. And then the sixth through eighth grade is an ASHLOC program provided. Um, the early learning inventory, the ELI, it will hit your pre-K and kindergarten. Um, it's a way to observe these students at a lower level and to assess them, see what their needs are and not just learning needs, but other social needs and, um, other needs that will help. And then our high post tutoring, that is already provided by the state, but they pay a tutor fifty dollars and with this grant, they're actually going to pay tutors seventy-five dollars. So I think that will really, um, push our teachers to want to come in before or after school to tutor students and so that will be, uh, phenomenal. And this is all things that were given to us by the grant. Um, the grant, what was the grant total, Sheila, for the grant?
It's six hundred and twenty thousand right now, but they did fund or give out all their money, they, for whatever reason, they only capped it at twenty schools. And so we've been told that we'll have additional money for year two, which is next year, with maybe a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars more.
And with the grant, these were all free items that came with it, which was incredible. Um, Sheila and I left and we kind of laughed when we got in the car because you felt like you're on like Oprah Winfrey's show because they just kept saying, you get this free and you get this free. And Sheila and I are having a budget and she's already budgeted all this and we're going, we don't need that now, we don't need that. So, um, like she said, the final prize, but really I would say this grant was close to a million by the time you add all of this in. So, um, it was phenomenal to get all these items free. Um, the little seniors daycare, they will be the bringer, which is going to be a screener and so when these little ones come in, we're able to screen and see what they know. Um, so it'll give us a kind of benchmark every time so we know as they head into our school system. And then they're going to have the curriculum for Ag Street, which is wonderful. Um, I was trained on it last year. It's a lot of learning your nursery rhymes and learning how to read with the music and a lot of manipulative, so it'll be great for our little ones. Gilmore, well, all, all of the schools will be on the OK MTSS. Gilmore will have the ELI that I talked about with the pre-k and kindergarten. Um, simplified writing will go across all of our buildings from K through eight. It's an incredible writing program that has nine units. It's kind of your curriculum for writing. Um, it really pushes when they leave the, uh, middle school or the junior high and head into the high school, they are writers that are prepared for that ACT, they're prepared for the SAT and really their, their goal is to be college and career ready. So when they leave high school, they have those skills that are needed. Um, Wordly Y is the program that we will put in probably the next year. Um, it's going to be a vocabulary program that hits all the way through the school system, K through twelve. I Ready will be our benchmark program. Amira is what the state gave us, so we will use that one because it goes along with the grant. But I Ready does a great job at recognizing the kids that need more services and then recognizing the kids that I would say are advanced also and being able to give them , um, the higher level of learning. So the school system, K through eight, we'll use I Ready, correct? Dibbles and, um, here at Letters will all be at Gilmore. Um, we will have a training for that for the teachers right now. You guys already used Dibbles, correct, Mrs. Olson?
Um, we used Star.
You used Star, okay.
We've been looking to move.
You've been looking at Dibbles, so we're going to go back to Dibbles. Um, most of them are all trained on Amira, that was the state program. And then Letters is the one I talked about, that will be a two-year program. So those are kind of the same for Gilmore and Heritage. Um, the Q has all of that, but also a bonus system is the ACT program was one of the groups that partnered with this grant. And so eighth graders will get to start the pre-ACT, which we think will be wonderful for them to start getting them ready for that. And the state will pay for eighth grade all the way to tenth grade to, um, have the pre-ACT test. They won't pay for eleventh grade because they already have a contract with the state since they are who give out the ACT. But, um, it'll be wonderful for our students to get to have those practices and have access to what's called the ACT suite. So where a lot of these parents go out and, um, get training elsewhere and have people come in, we're going to have that, um, free to them, which is going to be wonderful. Um, the high school, the same thing, we'll have the OK MTSS, the Wordly Ys, the I Ready and that ACT program. So these were all what was given to us and ones that Sheila researched that we would purchase with the grant.
Is there anything else I missed?
Anything I'm missing?
Okay.
Uh, these are professional development for the summer. Uh, Dr. Chris Pulver is, who came and spoke to our district when we came back from Christmas break. Um, he is a friend of Mr. Ferris's, he was phenomenal. Every teacher left there, um, and raved about it's quite the best professional development we've had. So Sheila reached out to him early on, he's very booked up, very busy. So he's going to come and talk to us in August. Um, he's going to do, we're going to have them out several times and it'll be great for our district because he can really target a lot of key points that we need. And then he's kind of, a better, lack of better words, um, the cheerleader for these teachers, that he steps in there and not only guides them, but also helps them with what they're needing. So he'll be a huge bonus that we're able to, um, pay for him to come. The OK MTSS Summer Conference, that's what the train is on, what's called the Ed Plan and all the other details that go with it. Simplified writing training will be online, but, um, our grant has enough money to pay for our teachers. They're going to complete about five and a half hours online and then we'll have probably a morning or a half a day where we work on the curriculum mapping of what they learned and then we plan out K through eighth grade of how we're going to put these units in. And so, um, the district or the grant will pay for that, for their training. Uh, the SLB refresher course, I'm going to let you speak more about that one.
Um, our, most of our teachers from K down have been trained on SLB, which is our robotics program. Um, and not everybody has used it, all the parts of it and some of the grades have used very little of it. So we are going to do a refresher course where they're, they're going to come into the district and sit with those teachers and go through those components. And the reasoning of why, you know, they're all important and the teaching it to fidelity. So that will be done in-house during one of the PD days before school starts.
And then, um, Amira will have training on, a lot of the students, a lot of teachers in elementary have used it, it came in last year. Um, we're just making sure our entire district's trained on it because that's the big component of this is making sure that we have benchmark testing all the way through our grades. Um, I Ready will have training on for those teachers who have not implemented that yet. And then the ACT, they'll also provide, um, online training or virtual, however we choose to do it. So it'll be nice that, um, the, they did a great job, the State Department, in not just handing us these services, but making sure that we have the training needed so we all felt like we were ready to roll on day one with this. Um, with the grant, you do incorporate a lot of family and community engagement. Uh, Mrs. Leslie Redwine will really run that department for us, so I'll let her speak about that.
Yeah, so some of the things are really going to try to get books in, um, in the kids' and the families' hands. So, um, even doing a program at, um, the daycare where they have kind of reading activities and things that they can take home to do with their family. Um, at Gilmore and Heritage, um, maybe trying to play at some quarterly family literacy game nights where families can come in and, um, play some reading games and, um, get to know the teachers and things like that. Even, um, working with the, the library, um, in the summer to keep, um, summer reading going. And then, um, looking into, maybe planning some workshops for some different reading strategies, um, to kind of help with parents if their reader is struggling or they don't know what kind of books, connecting them to the, the right resources. So really kind of make it a whole, not just what we're doing here at school, but connect it to their family at home too, so we're all working together. So they're successful.
One of the things we talked about this morning in our main principles and the theme, the, the, was that we're probably going to try to, need to try to move a couple of days from the spring when we're, when we've got built-in days over into the fall. So we can get that professional development into the teachers early so we can get a full year of this. We're, we're really moving as fast, as fast as we possibly can with this program because it's, we've got to have, and the kind of investment that the state's making us and we're making in the time on this with these ladies is essential that we get this set up. And we've already got one day set up where, uh, on Wednesday where we're out for spr- for fall break early. Uh, we did that because we knew we probably would get the grant and we set it up where we could have one day there. And, but we're looking at away football games so that we'll, we'll have the kids stay home those days so we can get, we don't have a lot of continuity between our district right now. We have a lot of people that don't know each other. And that's one of the things we're trying to get to do and, and I've heard that several different times. And we want to make sure that we're overlapping and we're getting the curriculum alignment and we're getting the horizontal, the vertical alignment, horizontal alignment, both, because it's the only way we're going to be successful. Mrs. Mo, Mrs. Lefty, well, I'm sorry. I see it all the time.
So if you remember, I came back, came in September board meeting, I think, and spoke to you about our new graduation requirements that are starting with this year's seventh grade, okay? So I sent stuff in your board packet, um, some things I want you to consider to take action on at your June meeting because we would like to start these graduation requirements with our high school students next year instead of waiting for the eighth graders coming up to get to high school. One of the main reasons, I put three things in your packet. The first one, we have to have an opt-in letter from parents of our, our current high school students saying, yes, I want to opt my student into the new graduation requirements. The only thing that's really changed, they still have to have four years of English instead of three years of math, they have to have four years of math. They still have three years of science and three years of history. Then instead of the two years of Spanish or two years of computer, they can use those as pathway minutes, they have to have six pathway minutes. So what we've done since I've been here, and longer than that, but when kids are freshmen, their parents sign them up for the core curriculum pathway or the college curriculum pathway. So these new graduation requirements gets rid of both of those and puts it all into one. So the opt-in paper was the first one I want you to look at, but because the students have to have four years of math, I also put, have two, two of our teachers give a core syllabus because the state now says that if the board approves some classes to be considered core classes, we can put those in these new graduation requirements. So you have accounting and you have computer science that if, I don't know if I put that in the, did you get, is this all I sent you?
No. It was just accounting, it's like a record.
Yeah, there, there should be one more that shows the, oh, never mind. So of the, of the math classes, computer science was listed as one that could be, they could also go out to career tech for a year, that counts as one. They go out to career tech for their second year and any of the eight programs, that can count for a math. So we've got a student that doesn't really want to go to college, but on these graduation requirements can take Algebra I and has to, the second math has to be either Algebra II or geometry and in the next two years can be their two years out of career tech. So that's kind of what we're looking at. The most important reason I wanted to, our kids to start opting in, and I don't know if I put this in the, I guess I did not put this in your packet, but this says, based on a recent audit determination, Oklahoma Public Schools may not include students graduating on the core curriculum in the numerator for graduation rate calculations. These graduates must be included in the denominator. As a result, students with, schools with students graduating under the core curriculum will experience a decrease in their graduation rate starting next year. So of the, of my juniors right now, when they signed up as freshmen, I have nineteen juniors out of ninety that are on the core pathway. So if we keep them on the core pathway, that's going to hurt our graduation rate when they graduate next May. So if we can get some of those nineteen juniors to opt in to these new graduation requirements, it's not going to hurt our graduation rate. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if they opt in, they'll still have to follow and do the four years of math, but most of the nineteen that are signed up for core are going out to career tech and they can use next year as their fourth year of math. That's the main reason why we want to push this now so we can get our current high school students to opt in to these new requirements, namely so it doesn't hurt our graduation rate. I have nineteen juniors, I'm... I have nineteen juniors, I'm pretty sure Mrs. Boustert has over twenty-five sophomores and over twenty-five freshmen on the core curriculum currently. So we will see a decrease in our graduation rate if we don't get them switched over. So that gives you something to think about before the June meeting to make those, to push those things through for us.
So it'll just be one pathway for all kids?
Correct. And the State Department has these, on those six pathway units, the State Department has seventeen of these career pathways, I guess, that I really like. And why reinvent the wheel if they already have something good? Like if the pathway, the kids can choose, they're freshmen here, I want to do ag pathway. So this lays out their four years for them of what core classes they need and what pathway electives they need. And like I said, there's seventeen for transportation, for architecture, for marketing, for human services. It's great. So, anyway. No, I did not give you these, but you can look at it if you want. I just printed them off the State Department website. Okay.
It will be something, some education for the parents.
Oh, definitely.
To understand why they're doing what they're doing.
Definitely, yes, yes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
On the ransomware closeout report, we completed our protocol last week. We had a meeting with Don and Keith and Teresa and I and along with Jasper Merritt's help, I cannot believe I have two APs on the help. Have done great work in restoring the King Fisher system to our previous functionality. They've really done an excellent job on that. We've got, we have rescued, I think ninety-five percent of the computers that were negatively affected by this. And Keith really did a lot of it by figuring out how to get in and pull that stuff down. The switch to cloud-based business systems in October did protect our business documents from the intrusion. You could almost see exactly where they were going to, where they went to right off the start. And it was in the business documents. We've been a cloud-based student information system since early 2000s, one went to Classroom.com. But, and that continued, and with our current vendor, which we approved tonight, Sillogis, who bought Classroom, that's housed all of our student records off-site. Beasley's, Beasley, OC, and their legal team and their support team really came in and helped us. We were able to run through the entire, we ran a program that allowed us to make sure that there wasn't anything new coming up. And we're currently reconciling the final bills. We're going to be out of about $10,000 on this. Beasley's, the total bill for Beasley's is going to be about $35,000, I think. We've got a couple more bills. We thought we were going to get off of about $1,400, but we were sadly mistaken. Any questions?
Any other super dense report?
No, sir.
All right. P, discussion of possible action on joining Thrive Virtual School Cooperative?
So I spoke with you guys about Thrive last month and give you guys a packet about Thrive. So I kind of wanted to just hit some of the high points. The main thing I'd like to preface is the goal of Thrive is not to replace anything that we are currently doing with an online version. The point of Thrive is, since I've been here, we've lost fifty students to either as a dropout or to an online school like Epic or K-12. Most of that to the online option there. And the issue is with online schools, the graduation rates are pretty low. And we get a lot of those students who come back and for a semester or however long they've been, they really haven't been doing much. And truthfully, just knowing the success rate of programs like Epic, you know, it would be something I wouldn't want the kids to do in the first place. But when those kids do that, they are unenrolled from King Fisher Public Schools. So that affects our ADM, affects money coming into the district and puts those kids kind of in a, just a much less accessible environment. And so the purpose of Thrive is it's co-op with, it was set up by Newcastle Public Schools and it's its own entity. They are co-opted with like sixteen different school districts. And so where it is different from Epic or K-12 is these students remain King Fisher Public School students and they then do the online school. And so the other difference is with Epic, you have a teacher that manages a caseload of, you know, fifty students or however many. That teacher is not necessarily certified in that subject area. Where Thrive is different is they have a certified science teacher who does science. They have a certified math teacher who does the math. And they do that for all the core subjects. So rather than me as a student being assigned to one teacher who manages all my classes, I still have a math teacher, a science teacher, a history teacher, and so forth. One of the other things is students who are receiving special ed services, Thrive also has a special ed program. And so we would host those IEP meetings and make sure that the students' IEPs are being updated yearly. However, since we wouldn't technically be servicing those kids, Thrive has a special ed program that would make sure those kids are being serviced. And since they are the ones tracking those students' progress, they would make sure that the IEPs are being updated as needed. We, as a district, we can control who gets enrolled in these programs. So like I said, this is not to replace a random student who just wants to take an online option. These are kids that otherwise the district would lose as students because they're coming to talk to us about, they have big life events going on and they're going to go online. They're going to unenroll from the district and we're just trying to provide a different option for them. So the way their programs are kind of set up, they have a full-time program for students who want to go full-time online. They have a blended option for students that maybe need to work part-time and want to still be involved in ag or some program that we offer, but need to be able to have a little bit more flexibility in their schedule. They have a flex program, so also being administrator overall at school. Alternative ed has stricter attendance requirements than normal ed. And so if a kid goes to alt-ed, that's a special program. And if their attendance gets to a certain number, they get booted from that program and sent back to the high school or junior high where they're from. And so their alternative school specifically tries to target students that are alternative ed kids that would have those attendance issues out at our, at Jack and Academy. And then they also offer an expand program, which expand program is basically, we would only offer any course that we don't offer. So currently at the high school, we offer two AP classes. Thrive offers six AP classes. And so that would add four AP classes to what we would be able to schedule our kids. These are a hundred dollars a class and the expand program, especially with like AP, I mean, they're following all the college board curriculum and all that. And they have weekly check-ins with actual teachers and things like that. It's not a hundred percent online. And then this, no good for this, this would move all of our credit recovery to that platform. And so it would allow us to get rid of ed nudity completely from the high school and push our kids towards this platform that, rather than having a teacher that is servicing multiple subjects, once again, a certified teacher in that subject area would be overlooking those classes. And then also has a summer school component if we chose to use it for that as well.
Want to ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, so is this like credit recovery where the kid can be done with his classes in three weeks? If he so chooses?
No. So it's, so the course is set up by ed nudity, so they use that same program. It is then gone through by a certified teacher. They have to make sure that those courses that they use are meeting the same state standards that our courses do. And so given that those teachers are certified in that subject area, it's just gone through with a finer tooth comb. Whereas in a lot of instances, you know, those students are being put in front of those classes and.
But it's still kind of self-paced?
Yes, yeah. I would say the courses are robust and, I mean, a kid can't finish that fast. It's not possible.
Of course, credit recovery, I kind of feel like they ought to go back and teach with the teacher.
And we've definitely talked about that. I would agree. In most situations, that should be the case.
I mean, that would be, you know, the ideal situation, I think.
So this is primarily for, like I said, we've lost, I think my count today, of those fifty, thirty-four of them went to Epic or K-12 or some other online platform. And then we just, they're lost. They're no part of us anymore. And, you know, staff would say graduation and things like that are hard to come by. And we see it, like I said, we see a lot of those kids come back and they haven't done anything. They haven't gotten any credits or, you know, they've been gone for a year and they've gotten one credit or something like that. Hopefully this will avoid that. Their huge thing is they're super, super communicative with the student and with us so those students can be tracked even though they're not in our building. They're making sure that they're on their stuff. They have weekly check-ins with all of their teachers. So it's not fully online with just, you know, video courses. They actually have to check in and kind of have.
So you can follow their progress?
And Thrive would send us every week, all of our students on Monday, we would get progress. So that way, if there were students blended or something like that, that were, and once again, we get to decide that, if they are participating in something King Fisher, a sport, ag, drama, band, whatever, they're sending us those grades so that we can enter them in our system for eligibility and things like that. And not all the schools that are co-opted in have the same graduation requirements. So going back to like what, as we change and when we opt into those, we determine the classes that they need. Thrive just provides them and resources them with the teachers. Like this past year, they graduated a hundred percent of their seniors. And the year before it was high nineties, so more than doubled that. I mean, Epic was at right at forty percent, so.
So this gives the kid the opportunity to still stay connected with his kids in his class even though he may be taking a lot of work classes, having to work for whatever reason, you know, life changes.
And especially, you know, I think, I mean, we use the word COVID in the world of education a lot, but, I mean, life has changed a ton since then. And for a brighter reason, it's not just as a hangover in COVID. And so there was tons of examples that she threw out of students and just different situations. And the flexibility that this allows them to meet their graduation requirements and get their hopes up.
But you will decide who gets to go in the program?
Yeah, and so our goal would be, first and foremost, if approved, we would be reaching out to those students that have left us for online to tell them, hey, when you left us, this was something that we had in place. And let me tell you a little bit about Thrive and what they do and try to, you know, resource them and that.
Kind of resources as far as like, so if we have a decent number of students, because this won't affect our transfer capacity numbers, right? So if you have, say, twenty kids in a grade, is there any, what support does the school have to have, just entering?
So we will give, in terms of scheduling, we will have, so right now we have five hours we call active achievement where students are working on online classes. Essentially, those would go away and we would replace those with just one section in the morning and one section in the afternoon where those students have a place to work if they are taking an AP class that we don't offer or credit recovery or something like that. But the primary thing is, most of these kids we're not going to see because they already have left us to go onto Epic or K-12 or something like that. And these students would be added to, back to our ADM and CEPE is about half of what their ADM costs is.
Yeah, we'd wind up with, we'd get about twenty-two fifty a kid off of this, which I hate to put it like in terms like that, but that's where we're at right now. And it allows us to keep our ADM and more importantly, it allows us to keep our ADEA, which is just as important at our county because of gross production.
But also gives a solution for a child that maybe don't have a, you know, not get the, something a program that's been winning compared to other options.
And I would say if we looked, probably the vast majority of the fifty students that I'm referring to that have left us are on some type of IEP or 504. And the services they would get through Thrive versus Epic or K-12 is much greater. It'd be much more hand-on.
But you didn't say that we would be doing the initial assessments and stuff like we would.
We would house the IEP meeting because there's still our students and federal government requires us to be in charge of their IEPs. Since unlike a student who's in our building every day, we're not the ones laying eyes on them, Thrive has a special ed department that they track that stuff and they come join basically our team.
But they would write the IEP?
Yes, yep.
So how many schools did you say are doing this in the state?
There's sixteen and it's all been set up. There, Thrive was writing about eight hundred students and it's all been set up post-COVID.
How long is it?
It was set up right after COVID and then the past couple of years it's ballooned.
They set their graduation rate?
Last year it was a hundred percent of their graduating seniors. The year before she said it was high nineties.
They set that, they set that up to combat Epic. That is exactly what they did. And they did it very successfully.
It's Epic with supports. I called Cordell's High School principal because they use it. And I asked him about how they like it. He didn't have one negative to say about it. He said the communication was really good. They, if anytime there was a problem, they called not only the students' parents, but they called the school as well to inform them what was going on. So he said it was a win.
And now, so I came to Edmund and the principal of Virtual Edmund was one of my principals at Edmund Memorial. And when I called him, he immediately pushed me to caution athletes who started Thrive because he said they follow her blueprint. They're at twelve hundred students now. But she speaks to the OSSBA and she has books and stuff like that for schools to kind of set up their own. Here, it just makes sense because it's already, infrastructure is already there. And we don't have to try to jump through the hoops of staffing and things like that to try to make our own. They already have certified teachers in place for each of those.
On that list that you gave us, I think it was last month, there was like Tuttle and Marlowe and schools like that. Do you, we know like roughly, does anybody have, how many students that like those schools average on this? They even be, I'm just curious if they're not, okay.
Well, I can tell you Barnstall and Hardisty have their whole high school. Because they don't have enough, they don't have enough kids to justify the teachers. And Barnstall, or not Barnstall, well, it's over by Barnstall. They literally have gone up twenty-five kids since they joined that consortium.
They have no teachers in their school?
No, they've got teachers in their school. They've got teachers in their elementary and then they have a couple. Yeah, just high school.
They're K through eight, probably?
No, they're K-12.
Oh, they're K-12?
But they've only got like ninety-three kids. That's why no-no is the school. It's a real small school. It used to be a thriving school, but they're community.
But we're off, we're not all good.
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
Obviously, we need more hiring.
So are we? Any other, yeah, any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, I lost my spot.
I'm P.
What we were just discussing.
I'm P.
Yeah, I'm P.
All those who favor raise your right hand? Skeptical, she'll raise it. Motion, motion pass. Q, proposed executive session discuss employment compensation under the following positions for the 2024, 25 school year, the disclosure of wishing discussions would violate confidentiality requirements of state or federal law as authorized by 25 OS 307 B1 employment.
I hear motion. I like the motion.
I second.
All those who favor raise your right hand? Kingfisher Board of Education met the executive session on 5/5/2025. The board members consisted of Bill Wright, Dana Goldbake, Brad Whitlock, and Mike Copeland entered executive session at 8:29 and returning to open session at 9:46. The matters listed on the board agenda were considered in the executive session and no other matters were discussed. No board action was taken in the executive session. All right. Discussion possible action on the reputations for employment. One, the principal's contract?
I'm going to do R.
Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you. R, discussion possible action except reputations as presented.
We have Teresa Greco. And Courtney Dieter.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'm going to read for those resignations.
Second. All those who favor raise your right hand? Motion passes. Now on to S. Discussion possible action on reputations for employment at the following positions for the remainder of the 25, 26th school year. Contracts shall include a step raise on the Kingfisher Board of Education's salary scale. All benefits previously agreed to by the board and access to a cafeteria plan for pre-tax deductions. All contracts are with the Kingfisher Public School and assignments are based on district need. First one is I have a one, principal's contract, which is addendum A.
I'd like to recommend that we approve an index-based salary and move all contracts to eleven months.
I'll make a motion, we retain all our current principals.
No, the.
No, no, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
The, what he said.
Yes, as, what, what, what the changes?
Yes.
That he has.
Yeah, we've already, we've already hired.
Yes, sorry.
I second that. We both second.
All, all, all those who favor raise your right hand? Motion passes. Number two, non-certified support staff, addendum B.
Recommend we, we rehire all the, all the non-certified support staff.
So move.
Second. All those who favor raise your right hand? Motion passes. Double second. Number three, physician transfers within the district with salary changes, addendum C.
Okay. Pam, are you ready? It's going to be a lot of writing.
It's late, mine is too.
Okay, Haley Mitchell. Recommend that we hire her as an instructional coach. Do you want me to go ahead and read all of them? Or are you going to do them one at a time?
Uh, let's just read them all and do this.
Okay. I recommend that we move Jerry Graham to special education at her request. I recommend that we take, we employ Karina Ponce and move her employment to halftime for FY 2026. And I recommend that we hire Tyler Gatter, change Tyler Gatter's employment status from non-certified to certified employee for FY 26. That's it.
That's it.
Did she want a second?
No, because she's already done. We already.
Do I hear a motion?
Uh, we take the recommendation.
I'll second.
All those who favor raise your right hand? Motion passes. Number four, employment of posted positions, addendum D.
I'd like to recommend to the board that we hire Caitlin O'Hara, Christopher Steed, Ryan Brock, and Jackie Corr.
So move.
Second. All those who favor raise your right hand? Motion passes.
And please, please, please make note that Jackie, Jackie's name was written as her maiden name, not as her married name.
Jackie Dean. On the, on the addendum that says Dean, it is.
Yes. Same person.
Number five, extended leave without pay negotiated agreement, 41/2, page 15, for personal illness, addendum E.
I would recommend that we allow Carla Marshall to, we accept Carla Marshall's request for unpaid medical leave per negotiated agreement.
So move.
Second. All those who favor raise your right hand? Motion passes. And number six, opening of replacement positions.
I would like to recommend that we open an elementary position and a voc, elementary vocal music position.
I hear motion.
So move.
I'll second.
All those who favor raise your right hand? Motion passes. I'm T, new business.
I have none, sir.
I'll go to you, any announcements?
No, just, end of schools near, we'll be having the, the teacher final meeting on the fifteenth, 2:15, and the high school cafeteria.
All right. And then the adjournment.
I'm making motion, we adjourn.
All those who favor raise your right hand? We are adjourned at 9:52.